I'd like to call the meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee to order.
We'd like to call the meeting of the Templeton Board of Selectmen to order.
And now call the Phillips and Board of Selectmen meeting to order.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this meeting tonight is being recorded for the Templeton Community TV, TCTV, and the video will be made available to Templeton and Phillipsburg Cable Access, as well as it will be posted out on Facebook and their YouTube channel, YouTube channel, excuse me. First off, thank everyone for coming again to, I don't know if it's our third or fourth tri-board meeting with all of our boards together that we have at least twice a year. So I think for the benefit of everybody, I think most of us know each other, but for the public who might be watching, if we want to do some introductions, and I'm going to throw it out to Mr. Bennett because he's sitting right across from me, we'll start and work our way around.
Jeffrey Bennett, Templeton Board of Selectmen.
Terry Griffiths, Templeton Board.
Diane Haley-Brooks, Vice Chairman, Templeton Board of Selectmen.
Michael Curry, Chairman for the Templeton Board of Selectmen.
Professor Tarantino, Templeton Town Administrator.
Kim Pratt, Phillipsburg, Chair, Board of Selectmen.
John Lobtia, Vice Chair, Phillipsburg, Board of Selectmen.
Robert May, Advisory Committee, Templeton.
Wilfred Spring, Advisory, Templeton.
Faith Cursier, Advisory, Templeton.
Lee Guthrie, Vice Chairman of the Templeton Development Committee.
Adelaus, Finance Committee, Phillipsburg.
Tom Speck, Finance Committee, Phillipsburg.
Emma Hughes, Student Member of the School Committee.
Hank Mason, School Committee.
Laurie Nelson, School Committee.
Debbie Roachow, School Committee.
Jeffrey Marks, School Committee.
Debbie Colts, School Committee.
Brianne Trifilo, School Committee.
Margaret Hughes, Chair of the School Committee.
James Full, Senior Rep. on School Committee.
Amory Geister, Business Manager.
Chris Casman, Superintendent.
Well, and again, I thank everyone for coming, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Casman to introduce our guest tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It has to be over probably about two months, maybe two and a half months ago, when we were preparing, thinking about the tri-board meeting, you know, trying to figure out a way that we could best, come from a position of knowledge, you know, a lot of information was out there in terms of Chapter 70, education finance, et cetera. So, in one of our meetings, we thought that it would be best if we could reach out to someone from the state to, you know, discuss, can't discuss everything about Chapter 70, educational finance, we'd be here all night. And, you know, we thought it was a pretty good idea, and it was very well received by all the boards. So, each board was able to come up with questions that were really pressing either at that moment or looking forward into FY '21 and beyond. And we were very lucky to secure, obviously, Roger here, whom he, Roger Hatch has been with the department, well, with the State Department for 35 years, and in between either DESI or Department of Revenue, has, I guess, he's semi-retired because he's still doing a lot of consulting work, not only for Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, but several other think tanks, which I'm sure he will go into a little bit. So, we were very, I was very happy that he was able to come out this way, take a look at our questions prior. He has a presentation to present, and that hopefully will spark not only conversation, but a better understanding about school finance in Chapter 70. So, without any further ado, Roger Hatch.
It's good to see you all here tonight and to be with you. So what I'd like to do is to talk about how Chapter 70 works, starting out with Fiscal '20, the current year's numbers, and then, you know, I want to talk a little bit about what's going on in the legislature right now, because, you know, both the House and Senate have passed separate versions of some big amendments to Chapter 70. And so we definitely want to be cognizant about where the formula is going in the future. But first, Fiscal '20. The goal of the Chapter 70 formula, which has been on the books in one form or another since 1919, it changed dramatically in 1993. And that was the first year we had something called the Foundation Budget. So really, the goal of the formula that's currently stated in the law is to make sure that the funding for that foundation budget is adequately and equitably shared between the state and local taxpayers. But even as I say that, you know, if you think about it, who are the state taxpayers? Where does the state money come from? From local taxpayers, just paid in a different form through income tax or other forms. And so really, the whole concept of the formula is to make sure that it's adequately funded, so every district has enough money to meet their foundation budget. But then that the funding is considered to be equitable, and the state steps in to ensure that the poorer communities have a higher share of state aid. So, there are three steps. Defining the foundation budget, and there's a whole set of calculations, we'll go into some of them. And I don't know how familiar all of you are, there's probably a range of familiarity with how this nine formula works. It's gotten a reputation of being so complicated that no one, except a few thirds, would be able to understand it and explain it. But that, you know, that is not true, and I hope if anything that I accomplished tonight is, by the time we get through, that you will at least go away with a basic understanding of how it's working, and you'll have access, I'll show you the very end, you can actually see all this stuff on spreadsheets at the ESE website. There are some states which, for some reason, they do not publish their numbers on the state aid formula. Every state has a state aid formula. One of the states told me that they were afraid that people would somehow go into the website and change the numbers for their towns, which to me just seems impossible. But ESE, for a long time, has made sure that it's transparent about how these numbers are derived. So it starts with the foundation budget. Second, aid to determine how much local taxpayers on property taxes can afford to pay. And then, the final step is, aid makes up the difference. You have a foundation, local taxpayers can afford this money, and aid will make up the difference. And that's the formula in a nutshell. So, I'd like to say there are six factors that are the key components of the formula. On the foundation budget side, involvement, I want to make sure the formula is recognizing increases and decreases in involvement. The wage adjustment factor is something that only five or six states use to determine, to recognize the fact that there are geographical differences in costs for school districts. And this is a little understood factor, which has been very uncontroversial in recent years. And yet, if you look at your two particular towns, it makes a big difference. So I'll cover that in a minute. Then finally, inflation. I think inflation and enrollment play an equal role in these calculations. On the local contributions side, how much can be afforded from property taxes? Well, property value, that goes directly into your tax base, that's the basis for your tax bill. Income of the residents, and that comes from the Department of Revenue, from state tax forms. And why do we include that? Because we want to measure not just what the legal ability to raise taxes for the property is, but also how much does occur to taxpayers when they have to pay the bill. And so, again, Massachusetts is one of about five or six, a handful, of states that tries to incorporate income into the formula. And, there was our four, municipal revenue growth factor. You know, we have Prop. 2.5, and the formula has to recognize that there is this legal limitation on how much you could raise in property taxes. And so, each year, the Department of Revenue calculates the municipal revenue growth factor, which tries to look at what kind of percentage increase a town is going to be able to afford for their schools, based upon, you know, the increase in the levy limit, but also some other factors that generate local revenue that could be shared with schools, such as motor vehicle excise, and of course, they have to factor in the new growth. So it's not just a 2.5% increase, but it's an estimate based on past trends, about how much new growth is created. And the average is usually in the high 3% to 4% range. So if you're one of those who have the impression that Prop. 2.5 limits a town's tax bill to 2.5%, please, I don't agree with that, because the average is more like 4% in terms of the levy increase that you get in here, and that can reflect over time as well. So, in 2015, after a year and a half's sort of meetings, the Foundation Review Commission came out with these recommendations for how the foundation budget should change. And this came after, you know, years of people complaining that it hadn't kept pace with, you know, the needs of students in schools. After all, it was first put in place in 1993. Think of all that's happened, if not just in terms of the state requirements for testing and other things, but also the student population. Think of how many students today are in school and learning that, you know, 20 or 30 years ago might not even have survived. So, there's been a big push for a long time to have some changes to the foundation budget. And I think in certain key areas, it would be hard to find anyone who would try to defend the old foundation budget, saying it's perfectly adequate. Of course, when I use the word adequate, you know, you look in the dictionary, adequate has such a wide range of meanings. You know, ranges from fully commensurate, this is a random house, fully commensurate to mean everything you could possibly want under the sun. On the other end of the scale, I used in an example, the violinist's performance was adequate, not really that good. So, that wide range of meaning has been used all the way through that formula was put in place, to try to describe what, you know, we're trying to accomplish in terms of funding schools in the state. And so, it's a very hazy term. But by the time we got to 2015, and I think everyone agreed, certain key factors, the benefits, were so far out of whack. Special ed was certainly too low. And then, ELL, English language learners, and especially low income, the factors were considered too low. Those are the four key areas that the Review Commission recommended for changes. But there are 11 different categories in the foundation budget. So, these are four, because the other sevens, apparently, were deemed to be somewhat satisfactory. There was no recommendation for change. We'll see the 11 categories in a moment. But I do want to point out, if you're one of those who thinks, probably heard people complain with a lot of handbraying, there have been no changes in the foundation budget since 1993, why doesn't anyone go back and look at it? Well, first of all, those of us who've worked and looked at it every single year, but in the systematic sort of way, yes, the legislature did back in 2000, but then not again until 2000. So, yes, the time was right for reviewing it. And what I want to make sure you understand is, why, I mean, a lot of people have said there's been no change to the foundation budget, but there has. In Fiscal '18, the benefits were raised in such a way as to phase in, to reach the goal, which would be a fair standard, you know, this is a substantial change over a seven-year period. That was put in place again, so the second year was phased in in Fiscal '19, and they also added a component on English language learners. And then, in Fiscal '20, they implemented every one of the Foundation Review Commission's recommendations, sort of as a down payment on what they expected is going to come out in legislation, as the Student Opportunity Act, which is now before the legislature. But don't be tricked into thinking that the state has done nothing to implement these recommended changes. We've had three years of change already. So if you have in your packet, you might not be able to see the numbers before here, but the 11 categories, we're going to move on. These are the functions that belong in schools, you know, administration, instructional leadership. There are six instructional categories, biggest category, of course, being the basketball But then guidance, insight, pupil services, operations, maintenance, the benefits, the fixed charges, that's a big one. You know, the cost of health insurance in particular is a real big factor in a budget, as I know you must be aware of. And then special ed. So, each one of these categories has a rate that was put in place back in 1993. And the rate usually was reflective of how many teachers you want to have, or how many staff you want to have for a particular category. And then there was a cost associated with them. So they started out saying teachers would average $38,000 as a salary. And of course, that's gone up much higher over time, because inflation is factored in for the foundation budget for each one of these categories every single year. Now, this row at the top, foundation enrollment. Let's go ahead and next slide. I've got to come back to that. Foundation enrollment is puzzling to a lot of people, because they say, this doesn't match our published enrollment in our school. Well, that's for various, a couple different reasons. Foundation enrollment attempts to recognize the kids for which a town or a district is financially responsible. So, that would include the kids that the district is paying for, or going out of town, to outer districts. So if you send a kid through choice, or charter, or special ed tuition, or vocational, non-resident tuition, those count as costs, you're paying the bills, and so the district would get credit for those kids. On the other hand, if you're bringing in kids, as Narragansett is, through school choice, those kids do not count in terms of the headcount. But if they're low income, their low income factor does count. And that's a lot. It's $4,000 plus for each low-income kid. So, if you go back. That's a little-known fact. They don't, you won't be able to see that, though there is a category for low income, which is called economically disadvantaged, abbreviated as ECODIS. 483 kids are Narragansett, which is 32% of its 1,290 kids. State average is 36%, so you're right about average there. Earlier, I mentioned the wage factor. That shows up down here at the bottom, it's 100%. Well, back when this factor was controversial, it used to be you could be below 100%. But, a number of districts so badly that they got the law changed, and phased in over four years, so that no district would be below 100%. If Narragansett had its true calculated wage factor, it would be down to the 88% range. So each one, almost all of them, of these functional categories and columns, would have been 88% of what you see here now. And when you're talking about a total foundation of 14.6 million, 88% of that is going to be pretty low. So, you know, this wage factor adjustment is seldom scrutinized, but you should be aware that your district, actually, the majority of districts in the state, especially in the central and western part of the state, are benefiting tremendously at 100% adjustment. So, when you put all these numbers together, it adds up to 14.6 million down here. And that, on a per pupil basis, is $11,355, slightly below the state average of $12,008. Why is it lower? I mean, you're above the average on low income, which is a big factor. It's probably because you don't have any folk kids, I mean, you belong to Monticuce, so folk kids are high cost in the foundation budget. So folk districts, if you look at them, you find that they bring up the average considerably. I don't know, I said, it would affect you to be just about at the average. Maybe a little bit below, because your English language learners, you don't have very many. Whereas some districts have a lot, and they've been clamoring for a long time to get more funding for this. And it looks like in the Student Opportunity Act, that is going to come to pass. So I mentioned, this little-known fact, that receiving this is getting credit for the low-income, of their talent choice. Not the headcount, but the low-income, yeah. So, and you can see, Narragansett has, and going up, in the past grade, in terms of the number of kids, it brings in through school choice. School choice is an interesting topic, and I'm not going to spend too much time on it, unless you want to. By the way, if you have questions as we go through, feel free to interrupt. But school choice, the rate has been $5,000 ever since the program was put in place back in 1991. So it's always, well, in recent years, it's really been a puzzle to me. Why doesn't that rate go up? Why isn't our districts clamoring to have that go up? You're at least, you know, 1,000, 2,000, 5,000. You know, it certainly is way below what the original intent was. On the other hand, and I did write an article about this for the Pioneer Tribune, so it forced me to interview superintendents to find out what they feel about this rate issue. And I'm surprised, and a number of them have said, 5,000, that's just about the right amount. You know, it's enough to encourage us to bring in kids, but, you know, the fact is, it's a marginal cost. You know, they're probably not hiring new teachers or new staff, anyway, and so, to a lot of them, they felt it was about the right amount. Nevertheless, and this is something that was also pointed out in the state auditor report about regional schools, I think we had a question about that that day today, and we can talk about that later, but this is my point today, is that the rate probably should go up for school choice. You know, it's just, if only because it's been the same amount since 1991. Okay, let's take a look at the calculation for Phillipsburg. Its equalized valuation is $200 million. We apply this uniform percentage to every single city and town. How did we get that percentage? It was decided when the current method for determining contribution was put in place, which was back in 2007, on the aggregate wealth method. And I think it was a big improvement, because it defines each year what is the right amount, the right split between the state and local taxpayers, given that particular year's costs in the foundation budget, and also, given that particular year's property value and income. Those factors change from year to year. So, both the uniform property percentage, .34%, and the uniform income percentage, which is 1.498%, those apply in every single city and town in the state. And they're the only two factors, which, when you run the numbers, are going to yield exactly half of the required contribution coming from property and half coming from Both are measures of wealth. Economists often call it stock and flow, you know, property being the stock, income being the flow. Both are legitimate measures of wealth. And so, it was decided back in '07 that 50-50 would be a good split. But in any given year, you know, those are going to change a little bit, but the same uniform percentage for a particular year is going to apply to every city and town. So it's 50-50 statewide, but you notice it's not 50-50 for a particular town. Phillipsburg, when we apply that percentage, it yields $692,000 from property and $704,000 from income. Pretty close, but not exactly 50-50. And we have some cases where the split is really remarkably different. A town like Weston, if you think about all the property they have there, you know, you think that would carry more weight than all. And Weston is down in the 33% range for property, and the rest, the incomes are very quite there. So, when you do this method, what it attempts to do is to recognize a town's share of the state total in property, and a town's share of the state total in income, and that's basically what the method is doing. So, for Phillipsburg, we add those two together and it's 1.396 million. Now, compared to the foundation budget, which for Phillipsburg is 2.7 million, some towns are capped at 82.5% of their foundation, and this would be, for the most part, the wealthiest communities. So a decision was made in the legislature that even in the wealthiest community, the state needs to contribute some money. You know, if you look at some of them, they could raise way more than the foundation budget, but they're not required to do so, they're capped at 82.5%. And this has constitutional bases, in that, you know, the Constitution says, the state shall cherish education, and has a responsibility, even in the wealthiest communities, to contribute some money. Now, the number of communities is rising in that category. The 351 cities and towns, it's up to the 140, so that's a lot. And how do I interpret that? I think that it means that our state is becoming more heterogenous in terms of wealth. So, some communities would be capped, and that calculation shows up right here, but Phillipsburg is not capped. In fact, when you do the calculation, the, what we call combined average yield, the sum of the two components, is 51% for the foundation. So, that's the target for that particular year. And you'll see in a moment, the targets don't change too too much in most cases, but in small towns... small, small towns, you can see substantial changes. It just happened to Phillips then, I think it's been pretty steady. So, in fiscal '20, we need to get Phillips then towards its goal. And the way that's done is you start with the last year's required contribution. You apply municipal revenue growth factor 2.94 percent. That yields what's called the preliminary contribution, and we compare that to the target. And it turns out that that is 51.22 percent. The target is 51.67 percent. That's pretty close. In this bottom section here, that's where we check to make sure that disparity is not too big. Now, again, we have to recognize, not two and a half, the municipal revenue growth factor says their increase is 2.94 percent. And some communities where they're substantially below their target, more than 2 percent, 2.5 to 7.5, and that if it's beyond 7.5, an additional lead. 2.5 to 7.5, 1 percent is aggregate growth. 7.5 or beyond, 2 percent is aggregate. And that's a stretch for a town because already, I mean, if you believe in this growth factor, you know, that's what they have, that's what they can afford to spend. So, nevertheless, there needs to be a way to get those low effort districts well served to their target, and that has not happened. Neither Phillips then nor Templeton fall in that category. They're both very close to their target. Now, Templeton shows a similar pattern. Here we see the disparity between the property growth and the income is greater, 2.2 million, 3.5 million. When you do all these calculations, again, they're not capped. Their target local share is 38.86, low than Phillips then. How do you interpret this? Well, given the cost of their students, you know, it would appear that Templeton is a relatively, or poorer, relatively poorer community than Phillips then. And I can, I can talk a day about the statistics. You live here, so you know better. I've learned, I've come out to a town and tried to tell them that I know more than they do about their communities, but that's how the numbers are working for the two towns. And Templeton, their growth factor is 3.5, so they're 1.2 percent short. Pretty close. I used to say if they're using around 100 percent off, then they're pretty much right where they should be.
Can I ask a question? Can you speak to the equalized values that are used rather than the towns' assessed values and why that's done?
Equalized values have been a place in our state and Congress for many, many years, going back to before the subway decision, in fact, in late '17, which said that towns had to assess their full value. Well, the reality is, towns don't assess that full value, except in some cases. DOR actually allows for a range below 10 percent in assessments. So, that's reason number one, why equalized values are used. And what equalized values do, every two years, DOR actually looks to see all the sales in a community and makes sure that they're arms-length sales, so they're not between like a family selling a house for a dollar or something like that, just someone else in the family. They have three arms-length, and so, it uses that information to equalize property values so that all communities are on the same retail schedule, as if they were on the same retail schedule, which they're not, because they retail every, I thought it used to be three, but I found it recently at 75. But those two reasons are why we use equalized value and not assessed value, although you probably could find some communities where the two are pretty close, and assessors are given a chance to review the equalized values to make sure that they make sense.
Thank you.
And I said before that the two towns are pretty much right on target. On this graph, the light mean shows the formulas target. So, the team from Phillips then just started out at 40 percent, and for some reason, it rose to more than 50 percent, and it stayed about in that same range. I don't know what's happening during this time period here, but, you know, there must have been something. And you can see, Phillips then started out way above that target. That did maybe have a coincidence, because before we had this method, we didn't have something. It was basically what you contributed last year plus your growth factor, and that was it. It was no point when people said, well, this is the right amount for the formula to be given out. So, Templeton, on the other hand, started out with a much higher target, and I always, I mean, I have a case like this, it's nothing that they were trying to want. There was no, they were just meeting the required contribution that the formula I had in place between 1994 and fiscal '06. They were doing what the state told them to do, but on the whole, they come up with this target for the first time, and it shows that Templeton really should be making more And so, the formula did bring them closer every year to that target, to the point where by fiscal '17, they were very close, and then by fiscal '18, they were right on the target, 2019, and you saw the numbers from fiscal '20. So, what do I take from this? Both towns are really contributing or being required to contribute about what they should according to the formula. Now, when we do contributions, this throws people that we want two districts, so we could have split that contribution between the two districts, Monticuce and the local and the Aragansin. And this shows the way that we do that, that we take the total, which was calculated for Phillips then, 1.3, and we allocate it in proportion to the foundation budget for the kids at each district that the town will want. So, it's just a straight percentage, but if you see big changes from one year to the next in your required assessment from either Monticuce or Aragansin, this is the first thing I want to put out, because you're talking about smaller numbers at Monticuce. So, if you had a big change, say, a 10 for any year, that's going to shift the percentage considerably, and that percentage will shift over to Aragansin, or it could work the other way too. Okay, next slide. And likewise, Templeton. Well, here you see, they went from Y1 to 91 in Monticuce. Their previous percentage was 12.2, it's gone down to 11.1. Okay, 1 percent. But we're talking about, you know, required contribution, so 1 percent of the required contribution by millions is a lot, and that's going to shift to Aragansin. So, we had a couple of questions that were brought up. And minimum local contribution, I have a challenge here, not my knowledge, not a course, I expect challenge to the state auditor, which has the division of local aid. This goes back so far, I don't recall what the formal outcome was, all I know is, you know, at that time, there was no change in the process, for whatever the reasoning was. You know, whoever challenged it, they lost that challenge. So, you know, the question has been raised quite often, you know, here's the state saying, you have to contribute this much, you know, doesn't that violate top two and a half? You know, no, apparently it doesn't. Another question, how many towns or districts have only had the minimum local contribution? Not very many, not many at all. In fiscal '19, we had Fitzpatrick, Paul River, and New Bedford, who were slightly below, and when you're slightly below, you carry over what you're short into the next year, so it gets added to the next year's formula requirement to make sure that money eventually does get spent. If they were to fall short by more than 5 percent, they would be penalized by whatever the amount is below that 5 percent, and then the 5 percent would be carried over into the next year. We haven't had to penalize hardly any districts over the years, and I think that, you know, underscores how, well, first of all, it's a requirement, so districts do pay attention to it, and, you know, we just haven't had to. There are six districts who are between 100 and 101 percent. State average is 120 percent above net school spending. Aragansin is 113 percent, its net school spending requirement. Net school spending, I think I skipped over that, is the sum of your required contribution plus your aid. And so, no formula does not take into account how much you're spending over your requirement, because we don't want the formula to penalize a district if in a particular year they had needs such that they need to spend way above their requirement. You don't want to penalize them, so it's always built upon the previous year's requirement. Here's another point, you know, in regional districts, you often think that somehow you join together at the hip. Somehow hurts them in some cases. No, in the case of the local contribution, there would be no change. Each town was its own local, there would be no change in the required contribution. Nothing you saw in the previous lives, you know, had anything to do with the other town. It's all the, that town's property, income, foundation budget. So, as I said, you know, both towns are really right where they should be in terms of their requirement. That's not the case in all the communities, but you've gotten all those who are making, who were making more effort than what is required. Those are now being brought all the way down to their target. So, that's, that always bothered me, up to the point in fiscal '18, I think it was, where he was effort touching 100 percent, that, you know, the state would allow a situation in which some towns were required to spend more than what the state defined as a fair contribution, but they couldn't bring it down to 100 percent because it cost too much in aid. They finally did, and now, I think it's always going to be, for those communities where the growth factor brings them up above their target, they're always going to be brought back to their target. But we do have some communities who are below their target, and that's more of a difficult situation because of two and a half. You can't just say, you know, go all the way up to your target if they're, if they're way below. So, slowly, over time, you know, there is improvement, but it's going to take a while for every city and town is at their target.
Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
I have a question. The last bullet there, I think that's where we, we run astray, and I think you wind up getting a lot of letters being sent by communities, because the other side of that is, I mean, the state's not, is under no obligation to pay one penny more, and so, the local contribution winds up taking care of the delta there, the difference. Am I saying everything correctly so far?
I think so.
So, if you're at one, you know, we're at 113, and we get to a certain place with our, you know, your description of the foundations, the aid calculations are built upon required, not actual spending. So, if we're at 111, 113, where's the rest of that money coming from to, to get to the 113?
Well, the difference, I mean, we need to look to see in that year.
And I bring it up as an opportunity, not as a critique or anything. I'd say, you know, perhaps there's an opportunity in there rather than just saying, we don't have enough money, you know, sorry, go back to the drawing board.
An opportunity for the state to...
Yeah, recommendations, right, exactly. So, when I say, like, letters and otherwise, and trying to come up with ideas to, for the state to, what was the word, you used the word reform, with that series of reforms there, possibly there could be, you know, there's a lot of critiques of the formula, perhaps there's something there.
Would maintenance money apply to what he's saying?
Well, if you're spending more on maintenance than what the foundation budget has in the maintenance department, you're spending more than what's required. Well, I'm not sure I fully answered your question.
It's okay if it hangs out there.
I bring that up as it gets to the other. So, the aid calculation, you know, it doesn't require PhDs to look at these numbers, but those fair groups are, anything complicated, that would serve the system. Start with last year's, and it's for Aragansin and Templeton. The foundation budget is 14.6. Right now, remember, we had to split the original amount between Monticuce and Aragansin. Here's to Aragansin. The required contribution, when we add together, the contribution to the two towns is 5.8. So, what we call foundation aid is the difference between the 14 and the 5. So, that really is the amount of money that would be the right amount if everyone were just at target. That would be the right amount for the district to be getting. Instead, they start out, they're already getting 9.9. So, really, the district is receiving more than a million dollars above what the formula dictates would be a fair aid amount if everyone, if we just started from scratch, that's what they would get. But don't feel bad about that. Again, you have done nothing wrong. You know, these aid and contributions have been built up year after year after year. I don't recall there was ever a time when Aragansin did not meet its minimum contribution. So, it just happened that when these targets were put in place, Aragansin was already getting a certain amount of aid, and that became its base for a few years. So, in this situation, it's just a minimum aid, it's a per pupil, it gets added to the base, and that's, that's the formula. So, I, you know, I circled these two figures, required net school spending, percentage of foundation. We've already noted that the required contributions are above where they should be, but the aid is above where it should be. So, it starts out at 19, at the, at 111 percent of foundation. Notice in fiscal '20, it's down to 107.75. That's a big jump. Why did that happen? Because foundation budget went up faster than the municipal revenue growth factor. So, remember, we had those four different components that were added to foundation in fiscal '20, and so, that pushed up the foundation enough so that, you know, this calculation, even though it's only getting minimum aid, is now down to 107.75. So, anyway, that's the aid calculation. Now, these are important figures here, because if you look for big aid increases... Now, these are important figures here because if you look for big aid increases, the way to get it is foundation aid. But you're not going to get foundation aid. If you're already getting more aid than what the formula says you need to be at foundation.
Mr. Hatch?
Yes?
So for several years, Templeton was penalized for not meeting its required contribution. Were you aware of that?
Yes.
We just finished paying our penalty maybe a year ago, maybe two years ago, max. Dr. Castlevan, was it two years ago or a year ago? And we were penalized for at least five years. But yet you say that we've always met our, is it net school spending or required local contribution? So I just want to clarify that because we were paying a penalty. A sizable penalty. So there's a difference between net school spending and required local contribution?
That is correct.
We were paying a penalty.
Okay, and you have, there's this whole file.
Where would we kind of?
It's probably a very well, it's not part of the PowerPoint, it's in the first set of the town. So if you look at the top side of the graph, the last column, it says over the requirement. Actually, I guess there are...
Yeah, we were paying a penalty for several years.
I think the issue was is you were under effort for your minimum contribution. So the state implemented the makeup to get them where they needed to be. There was, and actually, there was, at the time, there was talk about penalizing those communities who were so far under effort. But to penalize somebody who already wasn't already contributing didn't make sense. So the increase in your minimum contribution was staggering. You had several years with large jumps.
So there's a, so Mr. Hatch, there's a difference between under effort, over effort, and meeting net school spending? And so there's, that's two different languages? Under effort, over effort, and meeting net school spending and not?
Under effort means you're in a situation where your growth factor puts you, your primary contribution, below your target. In that situation...
Right, we don't have big growth factors here.
Yeah.
We don't.
But nevertheless.
So that's where that chart comes into play?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's what you're talking about.
Okay.
Yes, you were, I don't remember the exact numbers, but you would have received, in this situation, probably a 2% additional...
That's what I... Okay.
Percentage point addition, if you call it that.
There's been a lot of controversy over this.
Okay.
And so we were under effort, but, okay.
Yeah, so eventually, it took ten years, but you're now at...
Right, now we're okay.
Yes. Now I understand what you're asking.
Okay.
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 Hold harmless.
Yeah. Okay, now, you get into this question that someone raised, how do you get out of this whole harmless situation? Think back to that list of six factors. Well, none of those can you do anything about. You can't change your role.
Okay.
You can't change inflation. You can't change the wage factor, that's the salaries being paid to people in businesses in your town. You can't change the municipal revenue growth factor, that's built upon across 2.5. You're not going to change your profitability legally, have very little control over that. And the income of your residents, you as committee members have no control over that. The harsh thing about this formula for some people is there's very little you can do about it. People are used to, you know, writing grants. And whether they get the grant or not will depend upon how well they write the grant. So the same thing is true in their minds. I was a psych major, so I've spent plenty of time trying to psychoanalyze people in their approach to why they're not getting more money under the formula. It's not something that they're doing wrong. The formula is built upon external factors. So what can you do? How can you get out of the situation where you're just getting a minimum aid? Okay. Remember those sources? If you were at 100% in a previous year, chances are, need additional foundation aid to stay at the next year's foundation, especially if enrollment went up or inflation went up. So you need to get to that 100% mark. And how are you going to keep that floating? When the foundation budget goes up faster than the contribution, you're going to get that factor that figure is going to approach a lower number and get closer to 100%. So in fiscal 20, there were only 147 out of 318 operating districts that got foundation aid. So you've got plenty of company. Okay? So will we have bankruptcy court together? Well... This shows statewide, a lot of additional aid that districts are receiving above their It's $518 million. Now, don't you think that legislators are tempted when they see that, to start taking aid away?
Yeah.
But they don't. You know, that's, first of all, if you did that, some districts would fall below foundation money. So this is a slightly different concept than foundation aid. It's a big number, that's why I'm showing it to you. Arrogance's share of that is more than $1 million. But notice on the lower end, those who are getting less aid than their target, you're in a good situation at this point. That number's gone down to zero. So now, this will be good news for some of you if you're not expecting much. I think it's going to be good. I don't think it's going to be good for, at least not the chapter 70 part. Some of the other provisions, such as the regional transportation, adding certain high-cost med kits to the circuit breaker, the transportation costs, that's going to be good for all districts. That's not equity-based, that's based on the cost. So whether regional or local, that should be good. But chapter 70 was, you still, I think, are going to have the same, you know, you're going to have more foundation aid districts than before. But who knows how many of them will be. The Department has estimated over seven years where districts are going to end up. And while the numbers that they produce for the first year have been challenged by a lot of people, and I agree that the way they did inflation is probably not good practice. But by the seventh year, you know, that balances out. And so I think their numbers are pretty good for the seventh year. And by the seventh year, Arrogance is going to be at 100% if the projections hold true, all other things being equal. So this would, this is in conference committee, and the finance components are very similar. So what they're arguing about is more accountability issues. I do think it's going to pass. And it's going to result in an estimated increase of $1.4 billion above what districts would have received otherwise. You know, they would have received, you know, some 800 billion to a billion over seven years anyway. So this 1.4 is on top of that. And it would be a seven-year phase at the beginning in fiscal 21. So Arrogance, if you take the ESE numbers, would, sure enough, would have dropped from 107 to 100. Its foundation budget would go up 30%, so required contribution would go up 38%, that's over seven years. Aid doesn't appear to be going up too much because it would take a while to drop from that 7% down to the 100. My second source of this is projections they did for the Mass Budget Policy Center. And that was last summer, so it's one year behind ESE's projections. But that showed Arrogance in fiscal 23 at becoming a foundation aid district. So the first couple of years, maybe it's just minimum aid. But if you hold on until the later years, I think the foundation aid district increases are going to come for Arrogance. And just to finish up, all the stuff, you know, if you want to get it to the spreadsheet for some, go ask the chapter 78 and ask for funding. And download the complete form of the spreadsheet. Have fun.
Okay.
In the beginning, you said that the wage adjustment factor, the laws changed, and it used to be lower, and that we are benefiting. Could you cite an instance how we're benefiting by that 100%?
Well, back to the foundation budget. If your foundation budget were 10% lower than what it actually is in fiscal 20, you'd be even further, required net school spending would be even further above foundation. You'd be even farther away from getting foundation aid. But, you know, this, this number would be 14.6, somewhere in 13 or 12.0 range, and that would be less aid.
Thank you.
I appreciate the chance to talk to you today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I know that we have other business, and certainly, I don't think we want to, so, but we really appreciate you taking the drive up here. Very informative. And also, we have the information, obviously, to look at and ask any of the further questions that we should come up with.
Thank you.
Do reevaluations for towns, is that three years or is it up to five now?
It's five.
It is five, thank you. Was it three at one point?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. For a reevaluation, it was three.
Okay. So we'll move on with our agenda. We had two other items on our agenda. I don't know how much discussion we can have about either of them at this point, considering where we are. We were going to start on the FY '20 budget update. I think we all know where we are, so I don't think we need to have much of a discussion at this point. And we were going to look forward to FY '21. And again, until we get an FY '20 budget settled, I think it'll be a little difficult to have an in-depth discussion of FY '21. But I will throw that out there if either board has any commentary on FY '20 or FY '21 at this point. The only other thing that I would, had wanted to bring up was, we had received a letter today from, I always say his name backwards, so I'm going to apologize.
Noel.
Yes, Mr. Noel Francis. And I just wanted to maybe have a conversation. It was directed to the Templeton Board of Selectmen and the School Committee. And I did just want to engage in a conversation because he's sent several of them so far, just to kind of talk about what we're doing with those. But I'll start with FY '20 or '21, if anyone has a comment they wanted to make on that before we move forward.
Do we have the numbers that he's looking for? The difference between the bump report and findings and the transportation, our minimum contribution? He said, what is the estimated budget gap for NRSD for FY '21? What numbers are suggested by the bump report? He wants to know if he's going to file a bill by December 5th. Two numbers, one for transportation, there's a, you know, what we actually got, I think it was 82%. They just voted to give us 82%. And does that fully fund us, or is there a gap?
Well, at 82%, it obviously doesn't fully fund us because we're missing that 18, so yes.
He wants that factual number.
Right, and I believe, maybe Ms. Geister, you could, have we pulled, I know we were working on pulling some information and numbers.
I haven't worked on it.
Okay.
Kind of need a base.
Okay. All right. So, and having just received this, we really haven't had much of a time to come up with addressing this particular, this just came today, it should have been on everyone's, because it's dated, I think, today. So we really haven't had a chance to look at his specific request and his commentary.
And I think he might be off a little bit because he asked that he thought you were originally proposing 20.9 million, but I think you said $22 million was your original budget?
No, 20.3 was the general fund request.
Okay, that's what he mentioned.
Twenty-two million is the overall budget when you add in revolving accounts and all of the other accounts that we use to fund the district.
So he says, using this reasoning, the budget gap for FY '21 is $1.2 million, an increase of 200,000 over FY '20. He said, from his point of view as a resident, even if the Commonwealth increases transportation and school aid by 3%, Arrogance will still have a budget gap of at least $1 million for FY '21. He just wants to know what that gap's going to be so when he writes his bill and submits it, he can defend it.
Okay, and I think...
And it's factual.
Yes, what I've, what I've heard is, we will work on being able to prepare what our actual transportation expenses, what qualified, and you have to understand the difference, it doesn't include sped transportation, it's only regular transportation. And it's only that transportation which qualifies under the definition for reimbursement. So there's a, you have to factor in, I know Ms. Geister spends quite a bit of time making sure those numbers are the correct ones. So once you come up with that, then it's that percentage that we get reimbursed. So we will, we can definitely work and prepare for him what our current experience is. Here's our bill, here's what we got for reimbursement, and that's what the spread is. And that's what he's looking for.
Yes, would it be possible to have it by Wednesday?
This Wednesday?
Yeah.
How soon? I would like to give him a date because he's been very patient with us and asked the same questions over and over.
See, the problem, I think that, one of the problems with some of this is there are a lot of assumptions built into these numbers.
Yeah.
And I think until we really have sufficient time to pull them apart and understand, you know, I...
He's just looking for the shortfall so that he can request the shortfall between what is actually provided and what is needed. So you have a base, just say $10 is your transportation budget, and the state gave you eight, we need two more. Simple.
We can give, we can certainly give historical data. The problem is, is without a final number, it's, the gap is an estimated thing, we have to work on what that is. But to be able to look historically for FY '19, those numbers are out. We know what we spent.
Right, Thursday they came out.
And we know what the reimbursement was, so we do know that gap.
Right.
Okay, so I think there's some of the information that we can provide. I think when I read this initially-
This one was a little more confusing, but I'm not-
It was. You know, trying to dissect where he's coming up with his numbers and ensuring the logic that he carried through actually does make sense. I think it might take a little more time for us to dissect that, to make sure that if we go and we ask for something, and from what I can see, he's looking for supplemental.
Right.
And supplemental is one-time money, that's the other problem. So any fix is going to be a one-time fix and it doesn't help us long-term. So again, I fully support the efforts, and I'm going to do his name wrong, Mr. Francis, I don't know my phone's in the hole, sorry, that Mr. Francis is doing because we need to be able to-
Try something.
I get concerned, though, with these one-year fixes.
Right.
And then putting them in concert with what Mr. Hatch just spoke about in the Student Opportunity Act and what that may do for us. You know, how do those things work together? So I think we need to spend a little more time trying to understand what he's asking for.
To make sure it's going to benefit us in the long run, because right off the top of my head, I'm thinking, will that lower our number, which would lower our aid? The question that I asked him.
Yeah, so again, I think we need a little more time to look at this.
Okay. Do you have an idea of how much? Because he's, the deadline is December 5th, he'd like to write the letter before then and get it submitted. If you submit a bill, it has to be submitted before December 5th and then you're automatically on the agenda. If it's after December 5th and it comes in January, then they vote, the legislature votes on whether they want to even entertain, hear you or not.
Well, I mean, Terry, you can demand numbers from her, but-
Not demand, but-
Well, that's what I'm hearing you doing. I know what Mr. Noel, Mr. Francis is trying to do, but rather than demand the numbers and say, I want my check, I want my check, because that's essentially what that petition and bill is going to do. And I know that he's got a timeframe for it as well. But what, the embedded thing in there that we're not discussing is the fact that he wants it to be public. He wants it to be able to say, we have a shortfall, we're going to identify two basic areas, it wasn't clear in the first one, but we've had some discussions, Dr. Kazivan, try to dissect the first one. But if we start pushing and just say, all right, I have a number, and you get the bill out there-
It's wrong.
Well, it's just one, if it's half-baked, do you really think it's going to get through the first couple of spaces? Remember, I mean, Representative Whipps or Senator Goby have to actually say, yeah, that makes sense, I'll get behind that. Maybe both of them get behind it. Maybe they get their friends and say, you know what, this is some really well-crafted legislation that I think that we can run with. But it is one time. It could be one example of one community saying, we don't think we're getting enough money, which is kind of, I mean, I don't know about everyone else here, it's kind of hard to say, I'm not getting enough money after that presentation. However, the fact remains that we're still in a shortfall situation. So I agree with both of you. I would love to be able to give him some numbers because he's got a lot of vinegar. I mean, yes, vinegar, yeah. So, vim and vigor.
Vim and vigor.
That's fantastic, and I want to support him to do that. He's also said, wow, I'd really like it to come through you guys, I think it would carry a little bit more weight. And it may, as we're aligned. What I don't want to do is rush to just sound like we're, give me a check.
Yeah.
Because it's never going to get through, if you follow how, and I know that you've been looking at it, Terry, when you follow these things, if it's going to have a snowball chance, it's got to make it through the first couple of wickets. If the intent of it is just to draw some newspapers, possibly, you know, a local news or something like that, or you actually get to a table, that's fantastic, too. But we have to be able to make sure that that's what our intent is, not just kind of shooting from the hip. So numbers, I think we could, you could even, like, 743. 743 is a number I know is what your transportation costs are. If it's 82, 82 was at 580, so we're looking for a delta because we have to acknowledge the fact that we actually are getting some transportation funding. We'd be asking for a delta or difference of about $150,000. That's a realistic number that I would feel comfortable putting on a bill or a petition to say, it is one time, but if we can get an earmark like that through using Mr. Francis's motivation, I mean, we all sit around that auditorium and try and figure out, you know, people throw out different ideas. This is a situation where, you know, a local lawyer in the community said, I want to be a part of a solution. But it has to make sense. So 150 there, and then that other number, which is in the neighborhood of like a $300 or $400,000 want, even though he's talking about and acknowledging it's a million-dollar shortfall for us. So 300 to $400,000, how do you package that? And I think that's what we need to work with him in a very joint way. It just, it can't be, you know-
Willy nilly.
Yeah, well, fire over a letter, let us debate about it for a week or two, and then, you know, expect to come up with something for December. So I don't disagree with you saying, we need the numbers. And I'm pretty confident that we can get numbers. I mean, that's one thing that we've all been pretty good at the past couple of months, is thrown out some numbers. But what is he going to do with them? I'd be concerned about that, that he would wind up getting pushed out on his own, no support, and then it would basically fizzle. So a good effort would wind up fizzling if we didn't have the right support behind him. Sorry to be a little bit at length, but I just wanted to kind of frame what I think Mr. Francis is trying to do, how we can help him.
And that's appreciated because I know you have had some other discussions with him that we haven't been able to have with him. So I appreciate you kind of giving some framework to where he's going and what he's doing because it certainly makes more sense for us to approach this together. You know, the other thing that just occurs to me as I think through, especially supplemental, it is one-time monies, and just like any one-time monies, I believe when you look at what typically goes into those earmarks, it's not ongoing type of expenses. You know, they make their budget and then maybe they do throw a little more at transportation, but they're very hesitant to do that. And I can understand because we're one of 150, 60 districts who are in the same position, that we're not getting full funding, or the regionals, it's a few less districts. So why, what makes us a more compelling case to get the funding than another district? But if we can start a movement, okay, and I know there's been other movements out there to fund the bus, and, you know, if we can start another movement that works with some of the things happening, that maybe together our voices move the needle for everybody. So I think it's a good start, and it may be another way to come at this that draws attention to the issue, because it's a big one.
And then again, you have to make sure there's no negative repercussions if we do get it. So the other, if I may, I don't want to monopolize everybody's time, but I did ask Nerissa Whalen if she would have any strategy, if Mr. Francis is, you know, because they did give us a little more transportation and they did pass things that brought us a little more aid when I read the report. But she had mentioned that a strategy for NRSDS would be earmarks on the FY '20 supplemental budget. If you can get maintenance money, that would generally be part of the FY '21. And I don't get this, I don't mean to, I don't get this because I'm not you. And I'm new, but I'm trying.
This is for any community, yeah, no, this would be for any community. So with the increased revenues that the state had in FY '19, the governor said, well, what are we going to do with these, the surplus of revenue? And one of the ways he deals with that is that supplemental budget. So it has gone through, will be signed October 31st, and we'll cross-table those who are, I think, October 31st, it's got to be signed. It was September 30, I think somehow now it's October 31st. But the House and the Senate have actually already met and discussed what will be on their plates for what they're recommending. And I believe it's, did compromise happen? I can't remember with the SOA in this one, I'm getting confused. And that it would need to be signed in for. So unfortunately, looking for earmarks for the supplemental, for the FY '19 numbers, is passed. But what I think to the point that Nerissa had brought up, for FY '20, if we get to the point where we close FY '20 at the state level and there are excess revenues once again, that if there are projects that the district would need, maintenance capital-type requests, those are the type of earmarks that typically find their way into that supplemental budget. And to date, I don't believe this district, we've ever really asked for anything, but something I think we need to keep our eye on as we get closer to an FY '20 supplemental, which isn't going to happen until July or August, when they finally close, it actually probably be August of next year. Because the FY '19 one is already kind of been worked through and almost to be finalized. So I think her strategy is right on, we need to be aware of it, and that's something we need to look at.
That's what I asked her going forward. Okay, thank you.
And at the same time, if Narragansett does it, there are going to be a huge number. So everything that we say, as Mr. Curry said, has to be able to be documented and we can't just quickly do it. So if we're looking for the next years, we have a better chance at planning as well because we're not alone in this. It's not like we apply, it's like there's a big, a number of people out for this little bucket, and they've got all their homework done as well, but we need to do ours and put ourselves in that bucket. But it's not something that, you know, it's a big chance that you get it.
Madam Chair, one of the things that we're going to do is we're going to reach out so we can speak. We need to sit down and, we need to understand honestly the math of it. So we're, again, we received this letter today, but, you know, we're going to reach out to Mr. Francis here soon to kind of sit down with us, to kind of go through it. I just need to, you know, with our numbers-
Even a conference call, I think, would be helpful, just to kind of talk through the structure of it.
Right, I need to, I need to hear, obviously, any questions, so we'll reach out when we-
Better you than me.
Perfect, well, thank you, and we'll look forward to, after you have that conversation, you know, whatever you report back, and then whatever concerted effort that we can do to support this path, and it makes sense for the district and the town. And I definitely want to include Phillips into this at this point. Mr. Francis is a resident of Templeton, which is why he's focused this way, but I think it makes sense, this impacts all of us.
I did mention that to him.
Yep.
And to Kim.
I just want to say that I do appreciate Mrs. Griffiths, your effort to help fund money. And I appreciated your comment at your meeting last about trying to help, and that goes a long way. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
On FY '20?
Yes.
So you've got a meeting tomorrow with the school committee?
We do have a school committee meeting tomorrow, yes.
Do you want to talk a little bit of timeline, maybe some courses of action on what could happen? I mean, we've got very little time before that deadline.
Sure. So basically, there's two courses of action.
Right.
When we meet tomorrow evening, the will of the committee will determine if we would like to certify at the current approved town numbers of the $19.5 million or lower, because either 19.5 or lower, certified at that gets us an approved and funded budget. So, and then we would be done with that piece of it, and then we'd have to put into action whatever we would need to do. The other course of action is the school committee doesn't have a vote to do so, we would be put in a position where we'll be reporting it. I know we've already had a conversation with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to let them know that we're meeting on Tuesday. There'll be another conversation with them to say, the school committee still has not accepted, and my, from what I've read and heard in the communications, is at that point the state will engage with not just the district, but with the towns as well, to understand everything and anything with the funding of the budget, so that they can come up with a number. And it's my understanding that no later than December 1st, because we have to set tax rates, there will be a number given to the district by the state. Now, that also means we have up until that day that the school committee could meet again and decide to certify at the, so we could up to 11:30, okay, up to November 30th, vote to certify at 19.5. So even though the state will be doing their thing, if at the ultimate end thing is to certify, then the state goes away. So really, December 1st will be, I'll say, drop dead as far as knowing a number.
Right.
Did I get all that right?
And just a point that we have to have six out of eight votes to certify. So it isn't two-thirds and doesn't allow for much difference.
So, you know, elephant in the room, or at least from my perspective, is there any chance for another joint meeting?
I was asked that question, I think, based on, now, again, it's, it'll be the will of the committee because at any of our meetings, someone could petition to bring it up. We do have timelines, so you can't have a meeting without 14-day notice in the paper and having a warrant done. So every day closer, you know, that window closes. So if we get to November 16th, anything after that, we're definitely not having a meeting.
Right.
I would, it is my belief, I can't speak for the will of the committee, it's my belief that the committee is not, will not entertain another meeting, but again, I can't speak until, unless an actual vote was brought up and deliberated on.
But in that event, that would be course of action three, because it would wind up happening. I just want to be able to prepare for anything, and all the emotional baggage that it brings along with all of the different options. So I just wanted to be able to have the conversation, especially since Sean's over there taping us, that people at least see that we're talking about it and that where they can understand things.
Thank you for saying that.
Yeah, and sometimes I think that we forget that. We all kind of know our business, but at the same time, people might not know what that business is, and they walk into our meetings and they don't know, and they, we're not giving them any kind of additional help. So I think it helps having that discussion on what are the different options out. I didn't have any more questions on FY '20, I don't know if anyone else did.
One thing going back to the commissioner setting the budget, we've had some exchanges with Christine Lynch. What was not clear to us is how much lead time he actually needs to go through that So at what point they need a clear signal of, you have a budget or we don't have a budget? I really didn't get any sense out of a couple of these emails of, so if we don't know by November 20, yeah, then we get into the weeds on the numbers. To the extent that can be clarified, I think it'd be helpful at some point.
Have we heard any definitive-
When I spoke to Christine on Friday, I have to report to them Wednesday morning, and at that point, depending on what our outcome is-
They'll lay out a timeline at that point.
They're going to start the process.
Okay, thank you.
You were fairly clear about that.
Well, they were real clear about when they would give a number, they just weren't real clear. What I was trying to get behind was, how much lead time do you take? Because we do have to get those tax bills, right?
They're going to start putting the letters together, depending on what I tell them Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
And we will most certainly keep both communities in the loop with that, as I think we've been, you know, I personally want to thank Ms. Geister and Dr. Kazivan for, I know that they've been very forthcoming with communication, so we'll ensure that that happens, so that none of us have a surprise. Anything else? Anyone have? So I did want to make one comment because Mr. Hatch had a wonderful presentation, and I think something that gets lost in the weeds with the presentation is the fact that there is a, the first thing that happens when state funding happens is they plug in all of the enrollment numbers for the state and come up with a total amount of foundation budget aid. And there's been, historically, this decision was made, 41 percent of that entire bowl of foundation aid gets paid by the state, and 51, 59 percent gets pushed back to the local communities. What's clear to me is if the foundation budget is flawed and doesn't fully recognize the needs of the, of the, all the schools and the districts, obviously, the budget, you know, the bowl of it, isn't big enough because there should be more monies. And of course, that's where we're going, we're seven years, it'll get there. So when they do calculate how much aid they would like to give to the communities, it's based on this deflated number, because that's all they have, is this, you know, based on the current foundation total number, and the 59 percent has to get pushed to the locals. As he spoke, the wealthier communities will get 17 and 1/2 percent, they don't get, right? So that whatever the difference there of the, between 17 and 1/2 and 41, will get pushed to the communities that have more need. that have more need. But when there's not enough need, so I just want to bring out a point, I was having a discussion with another of my ed funding friends, you know, and saying, "It's not really need-based, because we have needs greater than the pool of money that are out there." And that's what we're fighting for. I think that's, that is, when we look at the monies that we need, it's, the beginning piece is the flaw in the beginning of the formula. So again, that hopefully will be addressed. Will it be addressed enough? You know, again, the foundation budget is the foundation for education, and then you build things on top of that. So I think, as you saw, how many communities spend just foundation aid? Very few, because communities need more than that. So I, it was a wonderful presentation, but marrying that together with the efforts of Mr. Francis, I must say his name backwards, you know, and other advocacy that I think we need to do, which is to keep on top of the bills as they pass through, to let our senators and representatives know what it is that we need, what we're supporting them for. Okay, there were a lot of amendments that were filed in the Senate. Senator Goby wanted 100%, okay? They threw it out.
Right now.
They was just, but we need to be behind her, too. So I just, I wanted to kind of leave it with that, that advocacy from all of us here, from every resident, goes a long way to let our legislatures know that they're not out there alone, and what they're doing has an impact. So that, yes.
We really do have to find a way from each committee, including advisory, to partner together, a smaller committee, to advocate to our senators and to our representatives and to Governor Baker, that what you are just saying is enough is not, what they feel is enough is not enough. And the time has come. And there are communities who have done other movements, such as suing, and I'm not saying that we have to go that far, but we have to advocate with other regional school districts that we are not getting enough, and that there is not enough, you know, with any other school, that the foundation budget is not enough. And obviously, they are addressing that, but there has to be other ways to go about this. And that just, you know, sitting in the room, talking together, although it's lovely to see you all, and that we are all having our own problems right now, but it's not enough to just sit here and talk about it. We have to leave the room and go outside into the community with other residents and talk about this more on a higher level. And we really do have to start working on that. So, thank you, Margaret.
Yeah. You know, that we've been here an hour and a half, it's probably dinnertime for many. Does anyone have anything else that they'd like to offer, comment?
Last time we had this joint meeting, we met again roughly about this time last year, and then we met a little, if I remember correctly, around February.
I think we have on Jan, the last Monday in January is our next one that's scheduled?
So, you know, from that point, we'll...
Yeah, and I, and so we do have, I think we put, had everybody put on their calendars, January is the 27th or 28th would be our next, pull up the date, just so we can say it on, and everyone has it. And of course, if Mrs. Varney finds it before I do, it's the 27th. So Monday, January 27th, our goal is to have another one of these meetings. At that point, I believe that's the day that the governor's numbers may be released, if I'm not mistaken. Does that make sense, the last Monday? Does the governor's budget come out the last Monday in January? Is it the week before?
The week.
The week before, okay. So we'll have, that's good, because then we'll have a week to digest what his numbers look like as we come together.
I mean, I have to say, with due respect, we probably already know what our preliminary numbers are. We're gonna get 30 bucks, kid. I think we agreed we'd be optimistic at 40,000, where we jaded the other day.
Yes, we did.
We're gonna get something out, bossing.
Yep.
We know what our anticipated revenue for next year is across the board on everything. It's 100,000. Generally, that's within 15%.
Are you sending something?
No, you guys, but truthfully, we could probably back the envelope for today and not be horribly out of sync.
And that is a sad truth, you know, it truly is, with the state of, of the state, I guess I'll say.
And what, unfortunately, you know, we need to try to get the community to understand better, is it's a systemic problem. It's not a crisis, it's not an emergency, it's not you want all these things. We've been down that road. I honestly believe the budget was what you needed. The problem is, I've said it before, there's only one person who can multiply the fishes and the loaves. I'm not the one. And that's what we need.
So, like, budget outlook, we just wanted to share a couple of numbers, so we can start talking through some of those things. I think, and I think I said this the other night on the 22nd, you know, from my perspective, we went into the process, we had, it was a one-horse show. It was override or nothing. And the override didn't go, and we had nothing else. You know, we had conversations afterwards about splitting differences and all these different things. I think if we generate some ideas like we did the other day about some efficiencies, or, I mean, it's not new revenue, but I think, I think that if we can build our toolkit heading into springtime, I think, you know, we'll support, we'll still 100% support, but we'll have better tools to fall back on if the town, if the towns wind up saying, I know Phillipson said yes, but Templeton said no, it sounds like Chase Bank or something. So, you know, we'll come up with a better, we'll be a little bit more resilient when we have to basically figure it out amongst ourselves. That's at least my, you know, budget outlook. I don't know if anyone else has any ideas or otherwise. Mr. Speck, he looks like he's got an idea.
And I agree with you, and although Phillipson has had a history of yes, there's no guarantees next time around that it'll come out yes.
Yeah, we've done a lot of yeses, too.
When it comes to an override, the people may say no.
Hey, you know, surprise, no.
Yep. Therefore, maybe when we crunch the numbers...
And they didn't know what for. You know, I think there was a lot of crying afterward, cries, not crying. Is this on?
Ah, yes.
A lot of cries of, "We didn't really know what the picture was." So part of the toolkit is a better-informed public, so we wind up going through these numbers, and it's not just presentations. You guys did a great job coming in, I was sitting over with the advisory board when you went through it before. But what do these numbers mean? And to try and go through that, they recently had the town's financial team come in to have those discussions about tax and otherwise, to kind of generate that stuff to say, "Oh, now I get that." So maybe it was a no, but you could almost, in hindsight, say it was a poorly informed no. I don't know if anyone would agree with that.
Phillipson has a vehicle that, Phillipson has a vehicle which they, is seldom used. I've always advocated that the school use it to try to promote the school and what's going on here. We have the church newsletter, which everyone in town gets, and it definitely can be used for budget issues and comments about the budget. And maybe Templeton should think about some kind of a paper newsletter that comes out once a week, gets distributed to everybody with a mailbox, or if they don't have mail, email it. And then opening up the community for important things and for the school. Sports, kids that win awards. A year or so ago, there was a student that had artwork displayed, I think it was down in Boston. The only reason I knew that is because I was on the finance subcommittee of the school. But other people in town, you know, they don't know these things. And I think, I think it's very important to advertise and push your agenda. And maybe Templeton should rethink, it's a very cheap bulk mail that you could be sending it out, and like I said, open it up to, "The scouts are gonna do this, this happened that was good, blah, 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 some, something's coming along." You know, Facebook is good, but believe it or not, not everybody's on Facebook or have the time to go on Facebook. It's a thought. It's a thought. We have that vehicle, and it's been used in the past. I just wish the school would use it more often. I mean, they could do a whole legal page, hold it in half, both sides, whatever they want. Up-and-coming events, plays, sports, where the teams are at.
All right. Thank you. Yep. Good input.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any other comments? All right, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And I have a second, all in favor. Reposed, staying here.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Question of adjournment, second. All in favor of adjournment, everyone?